One moment. And you, Ms. Brandalini, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
She got it. All right, I got it. I got it.
Hey, I would like to call the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting to order. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. As always, public comment will be available both in person as well as on Zoom, and community members can also email me at nbrandalini@sit.org with any questions. To start the meeting, I just have a brief statement to read. Dear Situate Public Schools, families and staff, effective today, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Michael Long has resigned from the Situate School Committee. Mr. Long's personal reasons for resignation do not in any way pertain to Situate Public Schools or his work as a Situate School Committee member. We want to thank Mr. Long for his service to the community and the district. As the Situate School Committee remains committed to its core values of providing a quality education to our community's children, we will work appropriately with the town in filling this seat vacancy. I would like to invite Dr. Dutch to say a few words regarding the school budget and the structure of how the school budget is run. The school committee's role here, just to be clear, is one of budgetary oversight. Dr. Dutch?
Thank you. I understand that certainly folks might have some concerns as it relates to the financial matters in a school district. And I just wanted to reassure the school committee, the public, and anybody else who would have interest that access to funds for the school district are not available to any individual school committee member or the committee as a whole. There are multiple processes in place that would prevent that, including signatures required for any funds to be expended or withdrawn from any accounts. Those include three school committee members, my signature, the superintendent's signature, the town administrator's signature, and the finance director for the town. So it is virtually impossible for that to happen for one person. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that clarity. This time, I would open up public comment for anyone who would like to participate. I'll also check in online. Anyone in person wishing to participate can come right up to the table and address. So no one in person, as well as no hands raised virtually. Okay. We'll carry on with our student representatives, Emma Rydel and Victor Botha. The show is yours. Just Victor.
Unfortunately, yeah, so Emma is sick today, and I don't really know what that means, but hopefully she's watching on Zoom. This past weekend, over forty student delegates attended a conference in Boston for Mardi-United Nations. Special shout out to the awarded delegates, Ruby Shaw, Jonah Rydel, Nikolai Bakovich, Savannah Garabedian, Jane Ryan, Allison McGurty, Beth McKeon, and Anna Kelly. This is one of our best conferences yet. Congratulations to all involved. Students Taking Action Against Racism has been beginning each day this month with an announcement celebrating a black figure or accomplishment. Students and teachers are enjoying this daily learning experience. Happy Valentine's Day. The Best Buddies Club met after school in the cafeteria to celebrate Valentine's Day and a birthday. After school, students met in the cafeteria for some snacks and mingling. Music played in the background from Miley Cyrus to Grand Funk Railroad. The request line was open. Students painted some beautiful pictures on canvases for the first thirty minutes, and the group made cards and sang happy birthday to an IXL student whose birthday it happened to be. They finished off with some quote epic bingo games. February break is quickly approaching. Students have just four days of classes before taking the whole next week off. I encourage all students, but especially seniors, to take some time to rest and prepare for March, where we have not a single day off from school. This Thursday, thirty juniors and seniors will be heading down to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands for a school trip. Students taking Spanish or environmental science were especially encouraged to join, but everyone attending is looking forward to this packed itinerary. We're very excited after COVID to begin offering trips like these again. Students can look forward to the Irish Exchange Trip in March, a trip to France over April break, and more to come in the following years. District leadership held a focus group on the strengths, challenges, and opportunities of the SPS system, meeting with parents, several teachers, and then a collection of students from GATES and SHS. Emma and I both attended, and it was a great way for students to share their thoughts in a repercussion-free environment, and I think a lot of good things were said. Congratulations to the high school math team, who is currently first in the South Shore League and is now heading to playoffs. Over the weekend, the wrestling team made great strides in the Division III South sectional tournament. EJ Moskowitz and David Murphy will both move on to the state championship, as well as Sarah McLaughlin, who is only the second female athlete in Massachusetts history to win a wrestling sectional championship. Councilors will host junior college workshops on Wednesday, the fifteenth, and Thursday, the sixteenth, in this very library. All juniors are invited to attend. Now, I remember these events last year, and they were extremely beneficial as a stepping stone into the tumultuous journey of applying to college. In conjunction with Mass Insight and Applied Practice, Situate High School facilitate mock exams in advanced placement language and literature classes this Wednesday. These tests provide valuable feedback guiding students and teachers to a successful testing experience in May. All enrolled students are expected to attend. And finally, the GSA is holding a movie night this Wednesday in this very library, and we'll be screaming screening Paranorman. That's all I got for you today. That was a lot, but if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you, Victor. I think we're all super happy to see and hear that you're heading out there and traveling. School-based adventure. Very nice.
Absolutely. Yes, I was given the statistics, and I was so beyond confused with the different like lengths and things. But I am aware that the high schools' sectionals, they did very well for the swim team. Congratulations on as well. I do apologize for not having those stats in front of me.
Full disclosure, I'm a swim girl. Like, I do, I know the school has a new, even a new record. So can I? Because I do want to give credit to those winners. I'll bring it up. It is the the two hundred free relay. The girls broke a new, they have a new school record. It was Paige Blackley, Mae Lynch, Mackenzie Gilmore, and Megan Nelson. The time was one forty-five twenty-three, which was point seven five faster than the twenty-eighteenth. And they came, the girls came in fourth. Yep, Mae Lynch is in eighth grade.
Thank you very much for that amendment.
It was such a great accomplishment.
Right, I would have ran out of breath, I think, if I had added that, but thank you for that.
Came in fourth.
Congratulations, girl.
Thank you, Victor. We appreciate you. All right, leadership report, Superintendent Burkhead and Assistant Superintendent Driscoll, and Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Jamil Adams.
Thank you. I'd also like to, our guest was not on your agenda, but Amanda Preston-Sakari from Public Consulting Room is also here tonight. Just a little context, way back when I was interviewed for this position, three years ago, almost three years ago, about three years ago. A lot of the communication that I received was about what are we going to do to make sure that every child is cared for, loved, respected, and treated? As if they were your own child. And I think that's been our goal. We've gotten here. And I think we talk, often talk about the importance of social emotional learning and its impact on children, and we do a really good job here focusing on that. The question becomes, how do you measure that? We measure academics with MCAS, DIBELS, things like that. So we wanted to have some information, but we also wanted this to be inclusive in the process to include our whole community and bring this as a unifying event where everybody would have a voice. Talk about equity in our schools. What does it look like? What do we think our opinions are? So we also thought to be unbiased is to have an outside group coming to do that. So that we would have an outside perspective and some suggestions and feedback, and that's what we're here tonight to do. So Amanda's here tonight to present. Mr. Adams and Mr. Crystal and I are here to assist if there's any questions after from the committee. We may need to answer that, Amanda can't, school-related, so that's why we have a mini committee here. But I do want to thank Jamil and Heidi for all their work. This is several months in the making, preparing, weekly meetings. I want to thank Amanda and her group, PCG, for all their hard work. And I also want to thank all the people that participated, students, our community, our staff, our families. There were focus groups, there were surveys, a lot of information. And tonight, we're going to hear a summary of what that is. And then this week, typical of any presentation of a school committee, we'll follow this up with a complete report that will be in more detail for the community to have access to this. And just a final note, we'll use this information in setting our goals. And also, this information will be used in the strategic planning process, which is up and running now as a data point for our work with setting goals and vision in school in the next five years. Yeah, that's really true.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. It is great to be here in person. As Superintendent just shared, my name is Amanda Preston-Sakari, and I am a senior consultant here with PCG. And I have been leading this team through the work of you all here in Situate for the last six months, seven months, something like that now. And so it's great to be here, feel to share some of the results of that study. So this presentation is really meant to make sure that folks are aware of kind of how we went about this study and then share what we ended up developing were three priority recommendations. And along with those priority recommendations, sharing some examples of the types of findings that we, that we had that led to those recommendations, knowing that there are extensive additional data and findings and recommendations in that full report. We wanted to give you all the kind of overview summary to this evening. So to start off with just how we approach this equity audit framework, we want to lay, we like to lay out foundations. We're all kind of speaking the same language. So to start off, what is an equity audit in general? We're really looking at the policies, programs, practices of Situate Public Schools from an equity lens. And a couple of things that we called out here in this slide. One is really understanding the concept of equity itself. So if the idea is that there are a bunch of folks who need shoes, equality is that everyone gets a pair of shoes. Equity is everyone getting a pair of shoes that fits them. And so the equity audit is trying to figure out what size everyone is, what everyone's needs are, and how those shoes are going to fit. And so trying to help kind of frame what this equity versus equality conversation is that we hear a lot. And as a reminder, this report, this audit, is a snapshot of Situate right now in the conversations we had in the data we saw, and is meant to be a tool to help you all move forward and not a kind of comprehensive statement on a more longitudinal study. So wanting to keep that in mind as well. And how we, as a firm, kind of think about educational equity is really thinking about the individual perspective. Every student, every individual in the district's experience and perspective matters. With, of course, an eye to students who are historically marginalized or treated with low expectations for any number of reasons. But really trying to keep in mind, as we're looking at these findings and these recommendations, that we really value the individual story and voice of students and end staff here in Situate. So in thinking about what we looked at over the course of the last six or seven months or so, we had five focus areas for this equity audit that were developed in partnership with the Situate team. And those are leadership policies and practices, family and community engagement, professional learning, student outcomes, and access to advanced learning opportunities, and human resources policies and practices. And within each of those focus areas, we had these kind of broad guiding research questions. So asking ourselves questions within each of the focus areas that guided how we were trying to get at the equity lens within that area. So you can see these questions here. Know that these are the overarching guiding questions. And of course, we went much deeper than than these kind of broad questions in the actual course of the study. So how we went about this study, so that you know where kind of this all came from. Go ahead. So in trying to get a holistic picture of equity in Situate for these focus areas, we looked at several different sources. So when talking to folks in the community, we had, we had ten individual interviews with you all, members of school committee, with district leadership. We offered nine community focus groups with families, students, teaching staff, other staff, and school leaders. And we had sixty-four individuals participate in those focus groups. And then the district distributed an anonymous feedback form to the, to the community after these focus groups, and we received eighty-two responses to that feedback form. Most of them were very detailed and extensive, as we're able to really get a lot of information from those as well. And then we started off this whole study with our data and document request. So really trying to look at both publicly available data. We took a lot of data from Desi's website and from Situate's website, as well as internal data sources such as professional learning offerings, staffing, and other community sources data. And so really dug into both the qualitative and quantitative data sources for the study. Another piece that you're going to see in the full report, although not in the summary, is what we're calling the strategies analysis at a glance. And what we wanted, we developed this to help folks understand very quickly where kind of Situate was, fell on this spectrum of having these evidence-based strategies toward equity. So what you'll see in the full report are examples of core practices that the district could have or could be doing that can help them meet their equity goals, and then to what extent we observed them in Situate over the course of this study. And so again, as we, as we laid out here, a no designation doesn't mean that it necessarily doesn't exist or isn't happening. It just means that over the course of this study, we didn't see it. And so as you're looking at the full report, you'll see that. And the last piece of kind of analysis background is a risk ratio analysis. Many of you may be familiar with this. Desi uses these in their public reporting as well. So when looking at student discipline, as well as in the full report, you'll see looking at special education and IUP assignment rates, we use this risk ratio analysis. What this tells us is, if I am one student, what is the risk of me, Amanda, receiving a disciplinary referral compared to any other student in Situate? And so the reason why we use this risk ratio analysis, especially in districts similar to Situate's where certain demographic populations may be very small, individual, for example, disciplinary referrals could massively skew a finding if you're just looking at it from a proportionality perspective. And so the risk ratio analysis really gets that. That was the last piece of the methodology. Um, starting off with just a little context, you can go ahead to the next slide. One thing that I wanted to emphasize now, and that you'll see in our, in our recommendations as well, is that one thing that came through loud and clear throughout this study is this district's commitment to equity work. A lot of folks talked about a lot of favorable steps towards equity, the lit teams, the Tides Clubs, the work that the district has done to hire a director of DEI, to expand the support for Boston scholars in Situate, as well as some other programming. And so wanted to really make sure that from the beginning, we were calling out the clear commitment that we saw, the positive steps that we saw. And as you can see on the bottom here, there's a strong desire from almost everyone we spoke to to improve in this work, not necessarily knowing how or where they may be at at the moment. But that desire to improve and to really focus on this work was very clear throughout the study. And this is, these are characteristics that you all know already, but have them in here kind of as context, just the district's demographics, as well as how they compare to neighboring communities. As you can see here, we pulled Cohasset, Norwell, Marshfield, Pangam, Hanover, Rockland. So really just looking at your demographics and the demographics of the area as a whole, just as some contextual data. So priority recommendations. So there are three that we've identified, both from our team and then also in conversation with the leadership team, that we recommend focusing for immediate implementation when it comes to leveraging the work of this audit. Embedded equity actions and goals, equity-aligned professional learning plan, and data-driven systems and strategies for human resources. And what you'll see in the coming slides is we'll talk a little bit more about these three recommendations and have some examples of the type of findings that we used to develop them. So number one, embedded equity actions and goals. You all are currently in the process of developing a new strategic plan. So this is actually the perfect time to be able to reset and build equity into every step of this district's work. And so ensuring that equity actions and goals are explicitly included in development of the district's new strategic plan. And so having that clear vision, that common language, actionable, measurable goals that center equity in every element of the plan. I'm sure that Situate's strategic plan, as well as most strategic plans, have a kind of equity goal in them. We recommend taking this opportunity to make sure that equity is a goal within all of the areas of the strategic plan. And so you're really having it explicit and clear throughout the plan so that there's that common understanding of what you're doing and where you're going and how you're getting there. And for some example of findings of that, that built in, that tie into this goal, one of them, this idea of lack of clarity on the district's equity vision and plans. As I said earlier, it was very clear to everyone we spoke to that there's a commitment and a desire to do this work. There was a lack of clarity on what that actually means in Situate. Stakeholders didn't know kind of what the district's equity vision was, if there was one, or had different ideas of what it was. And there was a lot of messaging around a desire to be more equitable, but, but not really clear on how to do that or consistent messaging on how. A lot of conversations about well-intentioned themes and communications of intentions, but folks lacked a deeper clarity on goals and what it actually looks like in Situate. And families in, both in the feedback forms and in focus groups, expressed a desire for goals around equity so they could really understand exactly what the work was and how it was being measured. And staff shared a challenge around advocating for equity work and being a champion for equity work without them clearly understanding what the goals and actions to achieve those goals were. So that's an example of some of the related findings that we have tied to this, this priority recommendation. The next two slides were, we debated back and forth about, about how to frame these. And we wanted to end up sharing them so that leadership understands what what needs to be tackled in order to really move this work forward. We heard, as I said, we heard a lot of positives around the work done and the mindsets in the district. And we also found that community mindsets and a lack of understanding of equity are a barrier. And these were some themes that we heard across focus groups, as well as in responses to the feedback form. There were several uses of racially charged derogatory terms to describe BIPOC community members, including using the word thug. Many comments expressed that equity work is separate from and kind of detrimental to quality academics. And so that's a mindset shift that I think really needs to, to move in order to cap, build that buy-in for the new strategic plan and goals. Similarly, DEI work takes time away from issues that affect, quote, our kids. And so there are some examples of the ways in which BIPOC students and Boston scholars are not seen as, as our children from some Situate stakeholders, as well as, you know, claims of self-segregation, therefore the district shouldn't worry about it. And along those same lines, you know, BIPOC students and community members using racism as an excuse to get away with not following rules, as well as a really consistent denial of any equity issues in Situate because those stakeholders haven't seen it or experienced it or heard it themselves. So therefore, it does, it does not exist. On the flip side, the comments about reverse racism and discrimination against white people and people with, with conservative ideologies. And that because Situate's not very diverse, equity efforts aren't needed and are just manufacturing issues. So we understand that these statements are harmful and hard to read. We made the decision to share them so that you, as the district leadership and the community, as you're building this new strategic plan, have a complete picture of, of what needs to be kind of recognized and worked with in order to move forward with an effective plan. Next priority recommendation, an equity-aligned professional learning plan. So this is ensuring that, this is a kind of broad professional learning plan that ensures that equity and culturally responsive processes are embedded in all learning across the district. And so this would go along with the priorities and goals for equity that were determined by the district and would allow for educators to go deeper into areas where they want to or need to learn more. Really thinking about holding high expectations for all students and having that belief that every student can succeed. Helping all staff in the district understand implicit bias and what that means and the way that it shows up when, in things like recommending students for advanced learning courses or referring or assigning students IUPs, as well as including all staff who are involved in hiring and evaluation, implicit bias, and this idea of equity-focused learning comes in, in every area of work. And so wanting to have the district create this professional learning plan so that it's able to be embedded across the districts. And again, a sample of some of the related findings here that helped inform this priority. Really wanting to offer in more, more formats and different levels of learning. Staff members really wanting to understand what their goal was in learning around equity. And then not all personnel are participating in DEI trainings. We know that, you know, mandatory training can, can get tricky. But thinking about who needs to be learning certain topics and things like that is something we really encourage the district to, to dive into and tackle with this, with this plan. And then some additional findings, there's a perceived inaction and implicit bias from, from leaders and staff. Those mostly came from students and student focus groups that we had. There's also perceptions across stakeholder groups that the culture of discipline is perceived as punitive, especially for historically marginalized students. And almost every stakeholder we spoke to about this expressed a desire and need for training around equity and recruitment and hiring. So really understanding what that looks like. And just to share some of the risk ratio analysis that we've done, especially around the finding of punitive perception, perceptions of the punitive nature of discipline. Some district-wide risk ratios that we determined around discipline referrals. So this is any disciplinary referral collected in the Massachusetts School Safety Discipline Report. As you can see here, BIPOC students are five point six four times as likely to have As you can see here, BIPOC students are five point six four times as likely to have received a discipline referral as any other student in Situate. There is not any disproportionality across uh gender identity in Situate, so you can see here. Uh students within IEP are one point nine four times as likely to have received a discipline referral as any other student in the district. And uh student, low-income students, students who are eligible for pre- reduce lunch program are six point zero five times as likely to have received a disciplinary referral than any other student in the district. So um these these risk ratio findings um supported with the uh kind of qualitative findings from focus groups uh helped uh inform uh that recommendation around training. Similarly, uh this is a uh this is a uh proportionality analysis of advanced access to advanced learning opportunities. And what you can see here is um BIPOC students, students with IEPs and low-income students took the SATs and completed advanced coursework at lower rates than their peers um in twenty twenty-one at the high school. So again, looking at kind of proportionality around access and referrals to um advanced learning. And the final uh pri- uh priority recommendation is around human resource this uh strategies. So really encouraging the district to develop systems um and strategies that use data to guide the work of recruitment, hiring, and retention in the district. Goals and targets around um equity and workforce diversity um and monitoring progress towards those goals. Um tracking the demographic information of all applicants from the point of application through the interview and hiring process. That's not something that the district currently tracks. Um the district does have demographic data collection measures for staff. Will we encourage adding more, uh for example, staff holding additional language fluency, being an important piece of workforce diversity? As well as tracking the retention and advancement of staff members by demographics and disaggregating and reporting on that data to uh track the progress toward the goal set. What you can see here are some sample findings. Um the, on the left, is the uh proportion of students, teachers and paraprofessionals, administrators, and other school and district staff by race. There's all BIPOC on the far left, Asian, Black or Upper American, Hispanic or Latinx, and two or more races, and then white. And then what you see on the right is a gap, um is a uh visualization of the gap there. And so looking at the percentage of students who are enrolled, who identify um in these racial groups uh compared to staff, teachers, and paraprofessionals, administrators, and other staff. What you see on the far left is the gap between all BIPOC students um and all BIPOC staff uh staff members. So you can see those gaps here. Um and there is a commitment to diversifying the district's workforce that we saw and we heard. Um but there's a lack of clear and transparent language and expectations for what this looks like in action. For example, one stakeholder we spoke to shared, when I'm looking at a candidate pool, I'm not at all looking for diversity. I'm looking for the most qualified candidate. Um and others echoed this uh and this uh idea that uh diversity and quality are incongruous incongruous is something to address through um training and and language and communications. Um and there are uh there are kind of one-off efforts to include equity and diversity um in hiring and recruitment, but it's not consistent and it's not uh systematic at all. Um and the only retention strategy mentioned uh during interviews and focus groups um involved, quote, retention through benefits. So well, the things that are offered to staff and and not necessarily an intentional focus on retention programming. Um and then as you see here, as I mentioned before, there's no district-wide system or protocol in place for documenting or tracking applications or interviews. And so there's no way to even see um if there are places in the process where certain candidates are um falling out or or whatever it may be. Um and then again, the the recommendation around staff language would be as another important uh measure of diversity. Um again, having a clear standard process in the district around hiring and recruitment. Um a lot of hiring uh is independent by school uh and they're not aware of how their colleagues approach it. Um and so there is this this lack of this focus um and broad systemic way of managing this as a district. Um and of course, the recruitment reach. Uh the district has and continues to experience challenges in recruiting educators of color. Um I do want to be very clear, this is not unique to Situate. This is a challenge across the country, absolutely across Massachusetts. Um but it is absolutely a finding in in this audit as well. Um as we wrap up tonight, wanted to share a bit more about the full equity audit report. What you'll see are deeper dives into each of those focus areas. The way it's structured is for each of these focus areas, their strength to build on, positive things that we found throughout our equity audit that we really think Situate's doing well and can grow with. Um that strategies analysis at a glance table that we talked about, as well as, of course, opportunities for growth. There are an additional uh, there are twenty-five total recommendations in the report. That's a lot. There's a reason why we focus on three priority recommendations for immediate implementation. These additional recommendations are things that uh we think the district should talk about, consider, think about for the future. Think about building into some of those larger plans. Or if, in the case of focusing on uh certain chapters or areas of expertise, maybe teams will dive into some of those specific recommendations. But really wanting to emphasize that those three priority uh recommendations that we talked about at the beginning think are are the most important for immediate implementation. There are also additional uh analyses and data visualizations. There are data visualizations um around MCAS uh outcome gaps, as well as risk ratios around IEP assignments and more. So there's a lot more there. We just wanted to um to wrap this up by by sharing that we recognize the tremendous amount of work that um have the district has already put forth in this equity work. Um we really saw and felt this commitment to achieving educational equity um by the district leadership, by school committee. Um and we believe that uh you're ready to begin implementing this, you have the capacity, um you have the expertise. Um and we're really excited to see um kind of where you all go from here, especially as you're developing this new strategic plan and vision for the next few years in Situate. Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Um anyone from the committee want to start their questions? I'm imagining there are many.
Dr. Rapowski, sure, I'll start. I have a couple of questions and a comment. Um I guess I'll start with the comment first. And I mean, I want to thank you, all of you, for your work and your continued commitment to this important work. Um and I I appreciate seeing the data because I think it's just really good for us to have things to look at and not just speculate on what we think is out there. I guess I want to say to our community, to our BIPOC students and families and transgender students. I just want everyone watching who will either watch this now or later that I believe you, that I believe your story. I believe your narrative. I want to hear more and learn more. And I think the school committee, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we all believe what you're sharing in this um report. And so I just want our community to hear that because I think it's really important and I think we're committed to that work. So that's the first thing. I cannot speak to all the equity work as eloquently as you and of course, Mr. Adams can. I can say from an academic achievement and academic success standpoint that there is so much research being done now about the power of the collective intellect and the importance of having diverse and multiple perspectives in a space when our students learn. There is, there are neuroscientists doing work around cognition. And I don't, I'm sorry, I'm getting on a soapbox, but I'm kind of ticked off that the research is showing that we can go beyond what's in our skulls by leveraging the value and brain power of other people in the room. And so we are doing our kids a disservice if we return to the traditional. That's not what the world looks like and I'm just so glad and it's really important um that we're doing this with our students. So I do have a question, so I'll be, I'll stop now. Um two, two questions. One is, I know, I appreciate that this is a snapshot and that it's not longitudinal. With that said, can you speak a little bit to the quality of the data, right? In terms of how you're feeling about representation with teachers, students, parents, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's always a a tricky piece of this work because um we are not able to to go in and, you know, interview every single, every single person um in the district. What we do really emphasize uh when we're, we're looking at the things that we hear in focus groups and we're looking at the things that we receive in uh surveys or or feedback forms is this idea of um this idea of the importance of the concept of oneness. Um and the idea that if a marginalized person is sharing a story, then that is valid and that is true and important. And what, one, one of the things that we always make sure that we do when we're looking at um developing recommendations from these equity audits is not every, as you'll see in the full report, not every finding has its own recommendation. Because we know that as a district, you cannot um base every action off of each individual story that you hear. But what we try to do is share every finding that we hear and to try to tell the the story and paint a picture of a certain area in the district. And so um if we're hearing from from one student um an experience with a a teacher who felt like they um they couldn't speak up when that student was being bullied for fear of saying the wrong thing. And then we're hearing from a family member um that they had the same, uh the same experience with another district. We're not saying that every single teacher in Situate doesn't speak up because they don't know what to say or they're scared that they're going to say the wrong thing. But that we heard a couple individuals who are brave enough to share their stories that tell enough of a story to say, this is something that to to have a conversation about, something to have some training about, have some communications about, because folks don't have this language. It's not saying that no one has the language, it's saying that we had a few folks share these really harmful stories. And so we're not able to make the kind of statistical claims that we would want to for, say, a research um paper or or uh, you know, deeper study. Um but we are able to uh say that these are true stories happening in the district. And so that's where these recommendations come from.
That's helpful. So it sounds like you're doing something like triangulation essentially. So and and I will just add, I mean, especially the discipline work that you did, that's consistent with research that you see across the country. So we're not, unfortunately, unlike others. The only other question, I promised my colleagues I'll stop. Um, you know, when you do research, I'm sure as you do lots of these projects, when you finish, you're looking back and you're like, oh, I wish I had asked. And so I'm wondering, like, what other questions should we be asking ourselves? Like, what did you learn from doing this work?
Yeah, I think that especially as you're getting into uh priority recommendation number three, uh which is around the systems around HR. Um I I wish that I could could go back and dig into it, especially because that's kind of my background. I spent five years as the director of recruitment for Boston Public Schools, um really working towards workforce diversity in Boston. And so hearing some of the things that came out in the findings we have, I'm like, oh, I just want another interview with those three people. Um but really trying to understand um the capacity for some of this work around recruitment and especially around retention and around staff development and uh community building around um BIPOC staff members or staff members with other historically marginalized identities. Um really what what is 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 possible there? Because I think that there's a lot possible um that just, you know, had, either didn't come to the surface during those conversations or hasn't really been um kind of sussed out yet. So that was the kind of area that I I wish that I could go back into.
Thank you for all um the hard work. I just kind of have a comment about um the results because it's clear, like, we all know we want to do this work. But it's, we also have a lot of work to do in communicating what the goals are um to the community, to the staff, to, you know, other members of the um the City of Public Schools. Um because it's, you know, reading some of the comments, it's clear that there's a disconnect of, you know, the DEI work that we're doing is to make kids feel safe and it's important for them to feel safe because it helps them learn. So the comments about DEI taking away from learning is, it's not true. And I think we have to do a much better job of educating the community and how important this work is. Um and I think it, to piggyback on what Dr. Rapowski was saying, is I think it is very, very important for people to speak up when they experience um racism or marginalization because there are people, you know, like the comments, they show that if people don't hear about it, they think it doesn't happen. And it is happening because I've been on the the side of this table, having parents say their kids don't feel safe. And there's nothing more helpless. Um there's no, no more helpless feeling than having, there's nothing you can say, there's no response. But I feel like this this work will will help that. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much additional insight to um to add from one of my prior committee members. I'm sorry, I just like to thank um Bill and the district for pursuing this audit because it is something that's been a hot topic for the last several years and and um we always, you know, say it's out there or say that uh we have concerns. I think this helps, the word I really want to use is this helps quantify what we're after. Uh we never really had this data. Uh we had anecdotal evidence. Um we had individual stories. But now this is um quantified and people, our stakeholders, can see um some of the results of the questions and and the results. So that's really all, I want to say I'm I'm thankful the district that we're able to do this. Um thankful for you and all your efforts. Um and thankful that the community can now see um what our efforts of DEI are about. Um I'm interested, we haven't seen the um the full report yet as a committee, so just so everyone knows. So I'm looking forward to seeing that full report. Um and I just think it's a great uh initial step. And as you said, I think it is perfect timing that um this coincides with our five-year strategic plan. That's literally, I think, was kicked off last week or two weeks ago. So this is perfect, that this will be entrenched in those goals. So thank you.
Thanks so much. Just a quick question about uh when you did the focus groups. The sixty-four participants, was that an underwhelming number or sort of on par with the district of our size in terms of sample population that participated? I just, a lot of the common threads that were in there are not uh not necessarily new trends or quotes that I've heard. So I'm just curious in terms of our sample size here, if you felt that was representative enough or that gave enough sort of.
I think, I think that we definitely would have loved to have uh more folks attend. The folks who attended were incredibly thoughtful and gave great information and shared a lot of stories with us that uh we very much appreciated. We ended up um actually adding a focus group after coming down um specifically for um Boston scholars after hearing some um stories and uh analyzing some data. And so added on an additional uh focus group there to make sure that um there were a lot of folks who were sharing stories kind of on behalf of Boston scholars in Situate. And we wanted to make sure that um this, that this report was not speaking for someone who hadn't spoken. And so we um worked with with the team to to add on a a group just to speak with them. I think that the addition of the feedback form after the focus group, after the focus groups was really helpful um because a lot of folks who were not able to attend, um as you, as you saw, we had a lot of responses um to that. And I think that that helped us feel um more confident in um the kind of stories and anecdotes that we heard in those conversations because so many of the uh comments that we received through that uh through that forum aligned with and kind of dovetailed with um a lot of the things that we've heard in the smaller focus groups as well. But I don't, you, in our experience doing equity audits in in districts similar, this was not an anomaly. This is not abnormally low um or anything like that. We'd always wish to talk to more.
Right, that's true. Um and just in terms of threads, if, you know, areas of focus in addition to BIPOC community, other places of growth for us, like LGBTQIA+ and supporting those students and families and staff members and neurodivergent staff members, students, families. How does that tie into that? I kind of don't see that those threads coming through.
Yeah, absolutely. So um part of the uh professional learning plan as well as the goal should absolutely be focused Not just on BIPOC and and other racial demographics. Um what you'll see in the full report, especially around um student and family engagement. There's a lot of findings um around uh students who are members of the LGBTQIA plus community. Um and their experiences as well as um perceptions from staff around handling issues related to um LGBTQIA plus. Community members and 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 children. And so those are further in the uh broader report. Um and something that I think absolutely, the Equity Professional Learning Plan is intentionally um. Equity focused and not race-only focused, professional learning plan. Obviously, um race and ethnicity is a focus within equity, but um especially this day and age, uh a lot of people associate equity with just race and and ethnicity. And that's not the case at all um and want to make sure, and I know that the district team knows this, because we've had lots of these conversations. Um that this Equity Center Professional Learning Plan um is about much more than than just uh race and ethnicity.
Thanks so much. As as my colleague said, that a great um. Great lead and yeah, very eye-opening, in some ways eye-opening, and uh a great sort of. Component of building upon our strategic planning. Thank you. Mr. Adam, just curious from your lens, the DEI director, sort of how this process felt for you guiding us through it? If that works.
No, it does work. Um no, I'm appreciative of the process. I'm appreciative of it happen. I am remaining optimistic and looking forward to the journey that we have to continue.
All right. Thank you so much. Celebrating student learning, social studies, history with Mr. Steve Swett, Department Chair and Megan Gregory, Literacy Curriculum Coordinator. Just a quick announcement before we uh move on to this item. Just wanted to be sure that everybody was aware. I don't know if this went out. Friday or meeting, but um there's a few items that have been postponed until the March thirteenth meeting. Pro Stairs Agenda Item, as well as the Boys Club Volleyball at Citroen High School has been postponed. Just wanted everybody to know that.
So I'm Megan Gregory. I'm a P E to five communities for coming forward to me.
I'm Steve Swett, the six through twelve, Social Studies Chair.
We wanted to take a few moments of your time tonight to highlight some amazing things that are happening in social studies. We get as well. Um we wanted to start talking about how we celebrate student learning in social studies. Uh we have some great examples of the experiences and projects at the elementary level. The elementary level will be focused on making sure that social studies is engaging for kids. And that we're not only teaching content, but really focusing on those skills that students need to build in the elementary grade. So they're able to be successful when they reach middle school and high school for social studies. Um you're including asking questions, considering sources, um looking at primary sources, being able to synthesize information across multiple. Information. Um so really building those beginning social studies skills and research skills. Um we also like to have fun.
Sorry. I think it's more about picking it up.
Okay. Um and also um some of the examples we have here, want to make sure that it's fun in um elementary school. Um we have borrowed the jet maps from Bridgewater State University to give our second graders to do an in-depth study of map skills. Um some experiences to really put their skills to the test and be able to, you know, walk west and find a coast and. Um some really exciting opportunities um in second grade. And kindergarten, um we highlight classroom citizenship and uh kindergarten is at Bonham Town. We're focusing on getting to a hundred acts of kindness before um tomorrow, which they have accomplished their sixth.
And at the secondary level, um first of all, I'll say that we celebrate social studies every single day, every single classroom, you know. And uh and students know that and they feel that and it's part of the culture of how this work. In addition, we're excited about the civics showcases that are coming up. We're going to do um classroom level ones and then there'll be uh whether it's district-wide. And then we're also making plans to go to statewide one as well. So excited about the civics project. Excited about having all of you and and uh and us getting a better sense of what to do and how to continue to uh to make those uh really valuable, important. Learning and. Citizenship uh skills and. Kids will be learning better. The other thing uh worth mentioning is the History Honor Society, we cheer. Couple students are are inducted and and they're chosen not for their um GPA, but but for their love of history. And and their interest in connecting history uh to current events and what's going on with. Appreciate the history of society. We have two new electives um that we'd like to share with you. Um AP Human Geography is taught by Richard Curman. Jackie and Joe Masrae will be talking about uh human geography, which is a full year AP course, which is open to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. Kristin Emerson, uh supported by Jackie Kenny, will be talking about semester elective uh in women's history, who we're also very excited. At this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Curman.
I think we're a little last minute, Brad.
Um, I mean, I'm just going to give you a very, very quick snapshot of me and why uh my background sort of goes right into AP Human Geography. And then I'm going to tell you just a very short snippet about the course, and then Joe's going to type the course back to like, since in my class. Um so before I became a a high school teacher, uh I spent twenty-two years at the Coast Guard, essentially driving ocean god Coast Guard. Uh cutters around the Atlantic, so that from the Arctic to the Antarctic, and so of all three things playing. Um which, but is very, which was very, very pertinent to some of the teaching of AP Human Geography. I could just have example of that. This was back in probably about nineteen ninety-three, we took the Coast Guard Cutter from Central Poblasca to port call. Right after something had been dissolved with the CIS. And so we put Central Poblasca on the East Coast there and it's cold, most sparsely populated, but at the same time, there's a Russian nuclear submarine base right across the bay from where we were stationed. And it was trying to be able to understand of like, how can you understand this place and the people that are actually there? So when I found out that we were going to teach AP Human Geography, I just jumped at the opportunity because this is a this course, I think, I was actually waiting my entire life. Um so what we do, we teach, we start with traditional geography, and that's sort of the where are things and what's there. Uh and then you start getting into the so what, what really AP Human Geography is the so what piece of that, it's the why of where. Because it's really to be able to say, how do you connect all the dots? Um and by dots, I mean land, climate, resources, culture, my culture, that's ethnicity, language, religion, politics, and economics. To understand. Why things happen the way they do, why do people react the way they do, why do they have the political structure that they do, how do all those interact in system? Um to be able to explain the mind, but um so uh understanding that I personally just love maps. Maybe a little dry, perhaps. Um so in teaching the class, we start with maps, where we depart from maps very quickly. To try and make the class as engaging as possible to use um. Current research, the news, uh our GIS electronic tools, um video projects, posters, games, all sorts of stuff, just to be able to say, get kiss. Uh and understanding and and engagement with how the world connects. So with that, I'm going to tell, let Joe tell you actually how.
Hello, everyone. Uh I'm Joe Masrae, a senior here at Citroen High School. Uh first thing I'd like to emphasize about AP Human Geography is that is not a traditional history class. We're learning about why places develop and change depending on a lot of related factors. For example, we learn how population and agriculture relate, as well as connection between culture and agriculture, politics and land use, and much more. Not only do we learn that everything relates to everything, we dive in deeper and focus on understanding the complexity of these relationships. For example, recently in our agriculture unit, my classmates and I were assigned different roles roles in the food system. I was a grocery store, another student was a pathogen, my friend was a chicken, and other students took the roles of many other things in the system. We then tossed the ball of yarn back and forth between related parts to fully understand the complexity and connection between them. You can see kind of an action shot of me throwing the yarn and going my last thing to the air. Eventually, the yarn showed that the food system is a web instead of a linear progression. It was just that this was a very fun class and pretty eye-opening as well. Uh the main thing I would tell someone thinking about taking this course next year is that they need to be ready to take a broad view of how the world is connected. And how we can understand the influences that drive people and countries to certain behaviors. I can share one thing I learned from this class is that where people live, their culture and geography is so much more complicated than anyone could imagine. And diving into these relationships and connection is what makes this course so interesting and important in understanding the world around us.
Thank you.
Um, I'm Kristen Emerson. Um for twenty-two years, I was a child, so this has been my only job. I don't have a cool background like that. Um. Uh but while I was at Gettysburg College getting my undergrad, I took a course called uh Women's Movements in the United States. And learned about a number of things that've never been mentioned in my history classes growing up, and I absolutely fell in love with that class. I fell in love with what I learned. And I've been really trying for the last few years to share that information and that excitement with my students, and I was finally able to do it in a very specific format. Um in our Women's History Class that debuted uh this year. I have two goals of the course, and that's for all students who attend to see and hear how women are both represented and omitted. Uh in history and for all students to understand that they can add to others' understanding uh of women in history and women's history itself. Um we don't have any AP structure or anything, so it's organized into units exploring these experiences and history and things like art, sports, politics. And uh we end the year with a big unit on activism and how women have been involved throughout, especially American history in that sense. So um we don't throw balls at yarn around. Um could be perceived as this, this, so. Students who are created by both men and women uh to see the visual differences and to understand the historical context. Uh in our unit on sports, students uh analyze the impact of ten line through both recent news, and they interview their family members who were uh. Usually in school right before or right after ten line, which hit fifty years last year. Uh which helped them understand the impact on their own lives. And at the end of each week, students reflect on what they learned, that helps them understand what has and has not changed for women in history. Uh but what has not changed yet, is kind of how we like to frame that. Um Jackie was one of the inaugural students in the class, and I'd like to tell you about that now.
Hi, um I'm Jackie Kenny. I'm a senior here, and like you said, I took Women's History and overall, I was a really big fan of the class. Because it's a lot different than most history classes, because not only are you learning about people and what they did, you're also learning about. Why they were omitted from the history we've learned and why you haven't learned that about them before now. And I think that's just really important to talk about. And also, the class is pretty flexible in a sense. And it really focused more on interacting with each other and having a lot of discourse about women in history, obviously. And part of this included a women in activism project, we did it at the very end of um the quarter. In which groups each picked an activist movement and had to focus on women and how they were part of the movement. And how most of the time they were leading the movement, such as the Temperance Movement, which brought about prohibition, which, first of all, I didn't know much about. Let alone the fact that women were the ones leading the movement and really taking charge and making it into what it was. Um I found that was a pretty common theme in history, how women were often the leaders of such big revolutions and movements, such as the French Revolution. But they're really pushed aside in favor of their male counterparts. Um. But yeah, I think if I were to, I really recommend the class to anybody who wants to take it, because I think it's really important to learn about. And. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you all so much. We appreciate you being here tonight. I don't know about the rest of the school committee, but I'm a big fan of Student Voice. And hearing from you all directly and what you enjoy and what you find challenging or what you think you can grow on. Um always has value here. So we welcome you to come back anytime. Um questions, comments, anyone? Oh, is there more? Oh, good. All right.
We just had a couple things that we're looking forward to. Um Heather Allen, the STEM Coordinator, and I have been. Um hosting some family information nights and on the fifth at ten AM, it's about Wednesday, we're going to do it during Zoom. So if um parents are home or parents are at work, you can spare a half hour. Um we'll be talking about our science and social studies curriculum. Um that will be um uh that's the one to be sent out um via the app, so we can add to that.
Sorry. And we're excited by civic showcases and then AP's asked me the year, especially with the human geography. I'm really interested to see what what that test is like and how they're going on.
Sorry, I cut you guys off. No, I would, I would just, yeah, I would just echo what um Nicole said, and Bill, I feel like this is a new model for more presentations that includes students to showcase courses. Because I think it's a great reminder of why we're here. So thank you to all of you.
Just to hear the way uh the enthusiasm coming from the students and how it's something new and exciting and. It that's the whole key to learning, like if you have to be excited about it and have to like it and have fun learning it, and I feel like that's, you'll retain more information.
Okay.
Yes, definitely, yes.
I think it's somewhat consistent with the theme tonight of our review of DEI. I feel like at least the Women's History Class for sure. Is is part of our effort. Right, but it but it focuses on maybe something that wasn't accessible or or taught before. I think it kind of is in line with that. And then I love the, I love the real-world stories. I think it is fantastic. I like what Mr. Manager said. I just. Um for for high school kids to learn about kind of how the world works to some degree, I think it's really important to take away. Um because kids always like, why am I taking this math? Why am I taking calculus? I'm never going to use that, or why am I doing this? I feel like you're doing real life, real life things and learn that could carry you.
Thank you all so much. Great new business here. We have the FY twenty-four budget, which. extensively on through uh workshop. Many hearing. Productions Superintendent Burkeham went on their world tour. Our productions, Superintendent Burkhead went on their world tour. Here we are. Uh, next step in the phase is our vote. If anyone has anything. If not, I will entertain a motion. Yeah.
I have a quick question. I think I know. Um, Dr. Dutch and Bill, if the financial forecast committee comes back with the revised budget on relative to additional or less state funds, will come back and have to re-vote this number correctly?
Yes, if they come back either way, um, it's less of an appropriation or more of an appropriation, uh, we would have to re-vote.
I just wanted to, just wanted to.
The number. Okay. I make a motion to approve the FY twenty-four budget in the amount of forty-eight million nine hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars with, with revenue, the amount of forty-five million one hundred and forty-one thousand sixty-seven dollars from the town of Citrus and three million seven hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars for grants and revolving accounts.
And call in favor?
Hi.
Two sets of minutes to approve here. One from December nineteenth, another from January ninth. Any questions or comments about those? Entertained a motion on minutes.
I make a motion that the school committee approved the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
All in favor?
Hi.
I make a motion to, that the school committee approved the January ninth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Warrants. No warrants for tonight. Um, correspondences. We do have two correspondences tonight. Oops, that's. Thank you. Uh, we did receive this nice correspondence. Oh, okay. Reverend Natasha Stewart. Uh, from St. Oh, hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. We much appreciate it. This is such a lovely letter that I wanted to read it out loud so everyone could hear how wonderful it is. Uh, Dear Mr. Burkhead, SBS School Committee and select board members, we are ready in support of the important work being done by Janil Adams in the DEI program within Citrus Public Schools and beyond. In the short time this position has been in place, we've brought more acceptance and inclusion into all aspects of our community. This education is extremely valuable as our town becomes more diverse and helps our students understand the wider world. This work helps us to be understanding, compassionate, and kind humans. We are particularly impressed that Mr. Adams does not limit his educational opportunities to the classroom or school day but has opened up avenues for many others to engage and learn. His personal approach in reaching out through library programs, the Freedom Team, and a connection to the town's DEI advisory board is so important toward developing an equitable and inclusive atmosphere in our town. This helps us that, this helps to remind us that even when we disagree, we can offer stability so those with differences can be free of confrontation or ridicule. Janil models his behavior wherever he goes. As both members of the St. Luke's Social Justice Group and residents in the town, we encourage the school committee and select board to be mindful of the important contributions being made and the work that is going on. We hope this position will be a permanent part of our school district and we hope that Mr. Adams will be supported in his role for many years to come. Thank you so much. We much appreciate this. Great. And another correspondence that we received was these adorable and very creative, well-done Valentine's Day projects from. And if you had competition, uh, but we very much appreciate this. This is awesome. And thank you Wamata School students. So nice. We needed that. Right. Without further ado, any other business that may properly come for the committee? Before we close up here, um, future agenda items. I hope, yeah, we wanted to bring up. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at seven seventeen.
Second, all in favor?